I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order at 7:02. And I ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have a guest. Frank Kemp is here. He's Chair of the RTM TG SNA Committee, and he's here to go through the change in the boundaries for the RTM districts.
Thank you all. Frank Kemp, 20 Seagate Road on the RTM, and Chair of the TG SNA, the Town Government Structure and Administration Committee. And I'd like to give you a quick update on a matter that is going to be discussed and voted on within the next couple of hours over at the RTM. We hope it passes, but the RTM is always a robust debating group, and we'll see. But thanks to Kate in putting together the package for this evening. There's a 15-page report, which I am not going to go through, but I'll give you the highlights of it. It all starts back with the census, the national census, that was conducted in 2020 that revealed that the population in Connecticut's centers were moving to the west. The state did their own redistricting exercise for the state house. The congressional boundaries that were shifted by that are still, I believe, in court and big hassle over. But as far as the state house and the state senate, the committees worked very well together and set up the new boundaries and presented their, had all sorts of hearings and presented their findings in November, and I believe it was early December that the governor signed it, and it was final. When it was revealed as how they should, how they diced up the house and senate areas, which were not related to each other, our registrar of voters, their hearts sank because it, we got dealt a rough hand in how the districts split. When we started to look into it to see if we could remediate it or undo it somehow, the deal was done at the state level, and there was no undoing it or revising it. But we also found that other communities have it worse than we do. So it's a sort of a complaint that has hit different communities when they find that they have new house and senate areas, boundaries. In that 15-page packet, you will find a couple of charts, and I gave you on your desk just an extract of that. If I could walk through these quickly, you'll see the first page is a diagram map of the house districts. And in green is the district that we're used to being in, 141. But up in our District 1, North Darien, District 125 comes in there and extends on up through New Canaan and wraps around on top of Stamford. Well, that's the house. The next page. The senate district's a little more complex. If you, starting from the, have to, your eyes got adjusted, Darien's smaller on this diagram. You'll see Norwalk and Stamford on the same map. Starting at the bottom, there's Senate District 27, which is essentially a Stamford district that extends across the southern part of Darien, and hits a little bit of Roit. The purple area, which is District 25, is essentially a Norwalk district, which extends into the middle of Darien. And then there's District 26, the white area. Starts off in Westport, goes up to Weston and Wilton, and curves around and hits off the top, hits off a sliver of New Canaan, comes down across our northern sector, and winds up over in Stamford. So when you combine the house boundaries and the senate boundaries, you have a mess. You have what's shown on the next page is where our different districts, how our senate-house districts combinations work out. Now, the next page is the detail of District 1, but you can quickly see that District 1 has been chopped up into, our District 1 has been chopped up into four segments. The impossible combination of house and senate, all four different ways, 26-141, 26-125, 25-125, and 25-141. It couldn't get any worse. I guess it could get worse. But our friends in the registrar of voters saw this, and they just, it's just a real blow to them to be able to administer an election when someone comes to a polling booth and then has to go to four different, has options of going to four different booths, and the opportunity for getting things mixed up. That's the, that's the fear of the registrar of voters, who then can be sued, and there was a problem up in Stradford a couple of years ago where things didn't go well, and the court cases just extended for several years to try to get it all straightened out. I also bring to your attention that down in our District 4, over on the west-hand side of District 4, there's always been a little district called 4.01. It only involves, it involves less than 200 voters. People move in and move out, so we'll get reports from the registrar of voters from, they pull the data every month, and sometimes you're using, I'm using, we decided to use the January 1 numbers, but they've already changed. But it's less than 200. It was 172 or 176 voters who are in that 4.01. You'll note that, let's go back, let's go another, which is our page 4. You can see how District 1 got chopped up. Down at the bottom, 25-141, next, 25-125. You see, in our district, it would have, all have the same RTM candidate slate, but when the voter goes in, they're going to be presented house and senate candidates in different combinations. A headache. And also note that District 3 has Senate 26, House 141, but so does one of the new District 1. See, 26-141. So the idea started, why not shift the 170-some voters in that area over to be in District 3, and you eliminate a book? You eliminate one line at the polling stations. So on this next page, last page, you can see what is the matter, the matter that is before the RTM later this evening. It turns out, these are minor adjustments, but they have a positive effect for our town clerk, who has to administer the absentee ballots for all these districts. I didn't realize that when I got involved with this thing. I thought, it's all registrar voters. But no, Krista has to deal with the complicated absentee thing, which just got geometrically one-up on her. So by these two moves, but with, without these moves, they would have 10, 10 separate precincts to administer. With these moves, they only have eight. They're administering seven right now. It goes up to eight. Just count your blessings, it's not that bad, but certainly not 10. So you can see up in the northern section, one of our districts moved to District 3, and then down with 4, 4.01 is proposed to be absorbed into District 5. I should mention that the registrar voters has, over the years, done their very best to balance off the number of registered voters in each district, so that when the calculation is done, is how many seats the district has in the RTM, they're pretty much equal. Now we have 16s and 17s. With some population changes, there may be a change of one or two, one seat down, one seat up. Not being done at the moment, not, it won't be, it won't be done by this legislation tonight, but when Krista, town clerk, has to calculate that, as it's all specified out, how she goes through the math, in September to get ready for the November vote, we may see, we may see a change. Not major change, but, however, when the new developments start to build out, and people move into the new units and register to vote, District 5 and District 2 are probably going to pick up votes, and that will require, if we want to keep the districts similarly seated, it will require some more adjustments. But for now, this will not, tonight, if it passes the RTM, won't cause any immediate change, but it just sets the stage in November so that the registrar voters can have a little bit of an easier job of it. So I'd like to answer your questions, and then I'm going to run home and get into the RTM meeting, where this thing will come up, and talk, and talk to the RTM. Questions?
Frank, will the RTM districts have more than 17 representatives?
Not right away.
Okay.
I don't believe so. It's like, what will happen by September?
Right.
No one wants to predict that. And matter of fact, what they do down, the registrar voters, is to pull the statistics every month, and so you can, we can probably see a change coming.
Okay.
Frank, first, I mean, thank to you and your group for doing all this work. Second, as you've been going through this process, have you heard any downsides expressed related, you know, to these proposed moves?
I'm sorry?
Have you heard any downsides, as you've been discussing it with folks?
Town clerk and registrar voters are always concerned about voter confusion. And what the ROV does is send us all a postcard about where you're going to vote, and usually people just set it aside and don't pay attention to it. So I'm hoping that maybe they'll print some of the neon yellow or neon orange to the, to the people, because there'll be 170 here and 170 there, out of our 15,000. About 15,000 registered voters in town. So there will be those people who need to be, need to be paid attention to. And then when they misread their card or have some complaint, it's just a matter of customer service, just say, I'm sorry, you don't vote here, if you vote over there.
Thank you.
So if you have an RTM member who is in, currently in District 1, with this new districting is going to be put in 3, starting September, are they going to be a representative to 3? Sorry, or whenever this?
It's really, it was really nice, because 10 years ago, when the same kind of thing came up.
Okay.
Town council devised a wonderful paragraph, two paragraphs, which is at the bottom of the, I don't, in pages 15 or so of your handout, show the actual resolution that they're voting on, and it protects them. So if somebody, right now, there's no one in 4.01, and there's one person in District 1 who's involved in the move, but it clearly says in the resolution that they're protected. In other words, they serve out their term in the current district. And then if they, if they want to go run for election again, they're running into their new group.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you all very much.
Frank, thank you so much. This was a great explanation.
Yeah.
Really.
Good night, I'll see you on, see you on the TV.
Okay. We'll look for you. Zoom out of here. Okay, next item on the agenda, if it's okay, I would like to, if there are no objections, take item number six under new business first. Any objections? Okay, so we have tonight, we have the Assistant Director of Parks and Rec, Jim Coughlin here, and he is here to explain the request, which is discuss and take action as a request from the Parks and Recreation Director for a waiver of bidding requirements for the replacement of the Baker Field backstop. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm pinch hitting for Pam Geary tonight. Just, you've, she's come before, I believe, to get this money approved for $11,000 special appropriation to replace the backstop at Baker Park. We're asking you to waive the bidding process. We've got a couple estimates. The lower of the two was $11,000, which is $1,000 over the threshold for bidding. We are hoping to get the backstop put in fairly quickly, so if the bidding is waived, the hope is that we can get the supplies ordered up and get it installed before the Little League season starts up in the middle of April. So that's, that's why I'm here tonight to ask for that to be waived. So any questions?
So Jim, is there anything you can do now to hasten this project? Are there, will the little, the little, little kids be able to use Baker Field before the new backstop?
So, yeah, so I think ideally, Little League would want the, the older age group to use that, to use the field, so that's why we're trying to, to get that pushed up and put in earlier. We had a neighbor, as you know, that had some concerns of foul balls going into their yard. The backstop isn't appropriate for that field, so that's why we're looking to, to put that in before the season starts. I think ideally, they, they would want an older age group to use that. It gives them a lot more flexibility for scheduling. The younger age group, it's, it's not ideal to be using that field, so that's, that's why we're trying to get the, the backstop put in for the, really for the older age groups.
What do you do with the old backstop?
If it's, any of it's usable, we could try to recycle it and use it at other locations, but it's, it's, it's an old, it's an older backstop. We probably, we're going to have to replace it anyway, but if there's anything that we can salvage, we will.
Does this bid include removing the old one?
I believe it's removal and then install, materials and installation.
Okay.
Quick question, how, what's the downtime? How long does the?
I think it's about a seven-week turnaround, so from when we order it, so you're looking at, we're at the end of February now, so we order it, we're looking at right around the middle, middle of April, which is pretty much when Little League starts up.
Is it up and down in one day?
I think it's probably, removal's going to take you a day to remove it, and then some, some prep work, and then, to put, it's going to take probably a few days to install it. But a lot of it's, as is with everything, it's, it's supply chain, getting everything ordered in time. Typically, we'd be able to get it a lot quicker, but not right now, not at this time.
Any other questions?
Jim, if the backstop isn't replaced, the plan would be to not use the field for another season, correct?
The, the older age groups wouldn't be able to use the field, which is, which would, you know, there are so many kids in the Little League program, and it's getting bigger and bigger. I mean, even with our program, the pandemic has shown that people are looking for, for things to do, and they're signing up, and numbers are higher. So it would limit what they can do. The younger, it would have to be used for younger kids. Again, the older kids wouldn't, wouldn't, but, wouldn't be able to use it, and it puts, it would put stress on, on the league to try, for scheduling and try to get those older kids to play.
Any other questions?
I think my, I don't have a copy of the bid, but as long as it includes the removal, that we don't have to do anything extra, leave?
I believe, to the best of my knowledge, it does include the removal of it. If it's something that, that isn't, then I'm sure our, our crew would be able to remove that pretty fairly easily.
That's great. Thank you.
This is not a gigantic amount of money. You've used this vendor before, and they've been reasonably priced, and their services, I'm good with this.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions, may I have a motion to approve the bid waiver on this? Mike moves second. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thanks, Jim. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, I will move on then to for Selectman Report. And the positivity rate for Darien continues to decline. As of Friday, it was at 1.81%, and that, to give you, to keep it in perspective, it's down from 17.5% at the beginning of January. We had, from February 21 to 25, we had only nine positive cases reported in Darien from 496 lab-reported tests. And masks are now optional in town hall, and in schools, and on the buses. Sticking with schools, the Holmes-Hinley Royal Building Committee held its first meeting last week. Chris Price is now the chair. Jill McManon is vice chair, McCannon, sorry, and Sarah Newman is the secretary. I'd like to thank Kip Coons and Rusty Schreiner for taking the time to share the experience that they have garnered from working on previous building committees, and currently on the Oxbridge Building Committee with this new group of volunteers. They provided a clear blueprint for the work that lies ahead, and this committee will be meeting again, their second meeting will be this Thursday. Ever Source is continuing their natural gas expansion. The expansion will include 12,000 linear feet of new plastic gas main, which will impact Hollow Tree, the West Avenue area, the Fairfield Avenue area, and the Beach Drive area. And this is a potential of about 240 residents who can, who can connect if they would like, and work on that will begin very soon. Staying with more work in town, fiber optic is on the way. Frontier is here in town, and if COVID has taught us anything, it's that we rely on high-speed internet. Frontier is working to provide basic internet service of 500 over 500 megabytes per second. And to keep that in comparison, that's over 5 over 90 is what they currently provide. So you'll notice a lot of activity in the surrounding areas, including truck, truck traffic during this construction phase, which is starting in, well, actually, it has started, and should go through May. They are targeting 5,300 homes and small businesses, and hookups can happen as quickly as 48 hours after the completion of laying the lines. On the Ziegler property, as many of you are aware, Great Island, the Ziegler property is on the market. The opportunity to acquire a unique and stunning piece of waterfront property has to be considered. And as your First Selectman, I'm very interested in continuing the history of acquiring open space. That being said, there are many considerations that must be taken into account, and I will keep the board updated on any developments. The Mather Homestead Foundation announced that the McPherson family, their Mather descendants, have gifted an additional five acres of land, ensuring the preservation of the beautiful meadow that's bordering the north side of the homestead property. The land is now owned and cared for by the Mather Homestead Foundation and the Darien Land Trust. And this generous contribution further enhances the beautiful four corners in that area of Darien, which already includes the 10-acre Mather Meadows. John Zagrotzky has been elected Chair of the IT Steering Committee, so I'll let him update us on that later, and he is also Chair of the ARPA Committee, and he will be discussing that later. Finally, I'd like to note that a group of residents donated a bench that is now placed at Highland Farms in gratitude of Jamie Stevenson's vision and leadership. And Highland Farms is such a lovely piece of property that only continues to be utilized and appreciated even more with the passage of time. Thank you for that. That's my report. Kate?
Just a couple things. One, we're having some challenges filling some part-time positions, and temporary positions, so that continues to be an issue for us in this environment. Two, tomorrow night, Monica will be presenting your budget to the Board of Finance, but if you go on the website, it is on Open Darien now, that you can see the executive summary that Jen Charneski from Finance prepared, and all your work.
What time is that meeting tomorrow?
7:30.
7:30, yeah.
Is it online or here?
It's in person. They've been meeting in person. And then last, you know, you have a discussion tonight of a proposed policy on streetlights, and just wanted to give you a heads up, there are going to be more coming. I've been working on some policies that are with Monica right now, so I'm not going to overwhelm you, but look forward to some policies on other things like land acquisition, remote participation in meetings to be coming to you in future meetings.
Okay, that's it?
That's it.
Kate? Okay. Board liaison reports, do any of the selectmen serving as liaisons have any reports?
Not tonight.
Not tonight? Mike, Sarah?
Nothing worrying on here.
Oxbridge Building Committee, we met on February 9 via Zoom. It's a great meeting. For anybody who's been over to Oxbridge, it's really, really coming along. It's great. I was there this morning, and some of the glass has shown up, so the windows are going to start going in. But for those of you who haven't been paying close attention, it's being done in two phases. They're doing an academic wing, and then the assembly wing. The academic wing houses all the classrooms, and the assembly wing is where the library and the cafeteria and the gymnasium and stuff are. They are at about 76% completion of the academic wing. How it's going to work is come May, middle of May, May 15 is when they're supposed to be done with the academic wing, and at that point, obviously, the kids are not going to move over midway through the year in September, throughout the summer, they're going to start to fill out the furniture, and then the kids will come back, go to school at the academic wing in September, and that's when they'll demolish the current building that's there and start building the assembly wing. In terms of how they're doing on budget, it's relatively on budget, just a little bit under, which is pretty incredible considering, you know, what's happening with supply chain and issues with filling in for employment, but it's doing really well. They've had no, not very many supply chain issues, not too many issues with production at this point. The team is doing a really great job. There, it will be a little bit of expansion in terms of how many students will be there. Currently, Oxbridge has about 475 K through 5 kids, and they will have room for about 575. So that's good news in terms of building for the future of Darien. At this point, that's pretty much.
Thanks, Lucy. Public comment? We have a visitor? No public comment? Kate, do we have any emails?
I did not have any. Let me just check again. I had not, did not have any earlier today.
Okay, so next item is to discuss and take action to approve requirements of service for volunteer tax abatement. I'm going to ask Kate to explain this.
Sure. When the, when the volunteer tax abatement program was put in place many years ago, it included a provision that in February of every even year, the Board of Selectmen should review the requirements for service as they've been presented to you by the Fire Commission and Post 53. So those provisions were included in your packet. They tell you what the membership has to do in order to qualify for the, for the abatement, aside from having a tax bill in Darien. I do recommend that you approve the provisions that, they are unchanged from past years.
Any questions?
And this is sort of, this is sort of typical of how this is handled, where you have communities that are fortunate enough to have the kind of level of volunteer service for these types of organizations?
You know, I don't know how other communities, how other communities have handled it. I think different towns do different things.
Kate, so, do you know when the last time this was changed?
I don't believe it has ever changed. We did look at whether or not it should be changed, probably about, it might be as much as six years ago, and the volunteers were all happy with how things were established. They did not want, want to see any changes to it, so no changes were made.
What's the annual cost of this, in terms of value of the abatement?
Well, so last year, it was about 70,000.
71,000.
It was, you know, we'll tell you, what it could be is a bit higher, because, but some people who qualify, like for a full, the full $1,000 abatement, they may not have $1,000 in taxes, or they may not live in Darien or in Norwalk, with whom we have a reciprocity agreement.
Kate, do you want to speak to the difference in hours that are required? There's 360 for post and 130?
120, I thought. Yes. You know, that was, they drew up those, those requirements, the individual organizations drew the requirements up, and, you know, I, I think that the nature of their work for each of them is slightly different, so that may account for why they So that may account for why they have different requirements.
Right. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve the requirements of service for volunteer tax abatement as presented? Sir moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Kate? Thank you. Okay, so the next two items on the agenda, I would like to discuss them together. We can vote on them separately. And Kate will go through three and four.
Right. So when we apply for state grants, there often come all sorts of things that go around along with it. And one of the things usually is some kind of resolution that says who's going to administer and execute the grant. And we have to have that, and we have to send it up to the state, and we'll have to send it up with like a resolution that says, yes, you know, John Smith is the first selectman and has been for so many years. So when we apply for both the steep grant and the affordable housing grant, Jamie Stevenson was the first selectman. And the resolutions include her name as first selectman. So we actually have to reapprove and town council advised, pass the same resolutions, take out the name, which helps make it a little bit evergreen. But we will have to pass, you know, pass the same resolution basically again, saying that the first selectman, without putting Monica's name in there, is authorized to sign. Then what we do is we get a certificate from the town clerk that attests to the fact that Monica is indeed the first selectman and has been for some, you know, since November, and therefore she's authorized to sign the reimbursement. So we're ready to file for reimbursement on the steep grant. We just need this passed. We're not ready to file for the affordable housing, but I figure we're doing one, let's get the other one done at the same time, so that when we're ready to file for the reimbursement on the affordable housing plan grant, we can just send it in.
Can I just make it clear that she's looking forward to a multi-decade career as first selectman?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So with that. May I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the first selectman to execute and administer a grant with the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, the steep grant? Sarah moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. May I have a motion to execute and administer? Oh, no. Where am I at here? Okay. Just.
You want a resolution to approve, you want a motion to approve the resolution authorizing you to apply for?
Okay. Yes. May I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the first selectman to take actions related to a grant for the preparation and adoption of an affordable housing plan? Mike moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Okay, passes. Great. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a request to appropriate the American Rescue Plan grant funds. And John Zagrotzky will cover this.
Thank you. Glad to be here this evening. Dan Lumgardner, my fellow committee person on this effort. So just by way of review, the American Rescue Plan Act essentially came up with a great deal of money that was distributed to state and local governments across the country in response to COVID. And the nature of this grant is to assist these local governments in mitigating the effects of COVID, but it really is a lot broader than that in terms of where the money and how the money can be spent. And so what we did was we formed a committee to try and answer the question, how we should spend that money for the town of Darien. The amount of grant, of the grant that the town's been granted is $6,430,414, and I don't have the cents, but it's somewhere.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two cents, thank you. And we've received half of that amount of money, so about 3.2 million, and we'll get the other 3.2 million sometime in the middle of this year. And so the purpose of the committee was to say, okay, what can we do to try to source and solicit ideas for investing these funds? Get a broad cross-section of people involved in the committee. We had at least four, I think, separate meetings that were public, and we took public comment, and we've tried to make a, have a transparent process. We've even posted all these ideas on the town website in case anyone wants to take a look. In terms of organizing the committee, we basically came up with three buckets. One committee that was set up was for infrastructure, which Dan chaired. A second committee was around health and related expenses that Kevin Cunningham and Frank Huck oversaw. And then a third one, which was ball leather, which was Jen and Kate and I, and I was really to come up with ideas from all sources. So we did that. Those committees worked over the course of a few weeks and came up with ideas to kind of run the range of areas where we could invest. I think about the health-related ideas, there's basically two of them. One is a reimbursement for vaccination clinics that the town ran, and the other one is an idea to kind of pre-buy, if you will, pandemic-related supplies that were difficult to come by when we had the pandemic. The nature of what they're proposing is supplies that can last for a while, that don't have short expiration dates. The total of those two projects is about $220,000. Dan, I'll just briefly summarize. He and his team came up with several infrastructure ideas, which actually have already been sort of thought through, if you will, and are urgent needs that Ed Gentile and others have identified for the town. Those expenditures were total a little over $3.7 million. Those are in the materials. I won't go through them in detail, but basically it's upgrading and replacing some defects in a sewer line that's up on Old Kings Highway. There's another one around improving drainage at Grove Street, where there's been some flooding damage. Another that's around some, correcting some drainage around Salt Box and Coach Lamp, where there was a lot of flooding damage. And then finally, some bridge repairs over at Rings End. All of these projects have a degree of urgency around them in terms of the current state of the infrastructure that's being addressed. Or in the case of the Rings End Bridge, it's, there's some real tight erosion that's associated with the damage that we're seeing there, and it's really important to take care of those. Finally, in the everything else category, we have about 2.3 million in ideas there, and there's lots of small things, but I think high-visibility things. One of the things about infrastructure, particularly underground infrastructure, is that it doesn't lend itself to good optics. It's important, but it's not really visible because it gets buried when you're finished. I think the other ideas that we've come up with will be very visible to town citizens in terms of improvements to things like our parks, picnic tables, water fountains, paddle courts, all kinds of improvements that will be here and there across town that I think will be very visible. Of the 2.3 million, there's 577,000 in projects that are actually already in the Board of Selectmen budget as P and L line items, so they would come out of our tax base that wouldn't actually be bonded. And if we pass this tonight, the recommendation is that the Board of Finance should take that $576,885 in projects that are part of this and actually put that as a cut to the Board of Selectmen budget, because we'll still be doing those investments, but we're going to be funding them from ARPA funds as opposed to including them in the taxes for next year's budget. So all in all, we've come up with ideas, the total 6,309,000. There's about $122,000 in contingency that's left over. That's a small number, but we think certainly something that could be available if any of these projects run over, which certainly more than likely. But that is our proposal in terms of how to spend this money. I've got maybe a couple of other comments, but let me just stop there and see if anyone's had any questions on that. Mr. Burke?
Is there anything that at your committee level that was discussed that isn't on this list? Like an idea that was, whatever idea that you folks thought is not really worthy of consideration, so we're not seeing it here?
So there were a lot of small things. We actually came up with ideas that I think were maybe, what, a million dollars more than this or in that zip code?
Not quite a million, but several hundred thousand.
And so what we did was we had, we set up a sort of floor for ideas outside of the ideas that were already in the Board of Selectmen budgets of $50,000. We made a few exceptions, as you'll see there. But the idea was that these amounts are so small that it's probably better just to fold them into a regular budget process as opposed to them being funded out of this. So we cut out those small ideas from here. I don't know if there was any other major infrastructure that we took out.
No, the infrastructure was the same thing. And, you know, part of the reason for setting that dollar limit was, one of the things we looked at with the everything else category and the infrastructure category was, what could we do in addition to helping save money in the current year's budget? Well, what were projects that people had proposed for out-years in six-year capital plan that we could maybe move forward and realize some budget relief in a future year? And so the reason why we ended up setting a $50,000 floor was things under $50,000 aren't going to really move the budget, move the mill rate as much as some of these, you know, $100,000 items. We did save a couple of the smaller things. Both Dan and I made pleas. Me for the senior tablet loan librarian, I was the one who wanted the picnic tables and the water fountains because I felt like that was something that was going to be so visible to the residents, that this is where your ARPA money went. So we saved a couple of things that were under $50,000. There were a couple drainage projects that were eliminated.
Yep, that's right. Good question. Other questions? Sarah?
I have a few. Question for you. So I love the drainage stuff. That makes me happy because of all the flooding that we have. Question for you, I guess overall, let's say the projects come in over budget, let's say they come in under budget. Who's responsible for carrying, if we go over the contingency? Does it come out of Board of Selectmen budget? How does that work?
So a couple of things. If we underspend or there's money that is not deployed and some of these things come out a lot less expensive, that's certainly possible. The policy that we've proposed is that Kate is just going to keep track of that and come back to the Board of Selectmen with suggestions as to what we should do.
Well, if it's, you know, something that's over.
I'll get to that. It's a bigger problem, but go ahead.
But we would follow the normal appropriation process.
Yeah. So, and this gets into a, is a good question raised, but this gets into a kind of a larger point that I want to make, that I'm hoping that Dan will take to the Board of Finance. So these projects, these are pretty big projects. We've got, what, 3.5 million in three major infrastructure projects? And so the way all that's going to be funded is we're just going to use ARPA money for that. So if you're worried about the budget being high this year, one thing that you could do is you say, well, tell you what, I'm going to be more aggressive about using ARPA money to replace proposed spending in the Board of Selectmen budget. And instead, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take these infrastructure projects, and I'm going to bond them. So one of the things that that does is it takes out this uncertainty point about whether these projects go over budget. Why? Because we're not going to bond these projects until we're actually much further down the road, and we know exactly what they're going to cost, and we'll actually have project bids that we will then turn around and bond. So what you would do is you'd say, just in a theoretical case, tell you what, let's punt on these. We'll take the 3.5 million. We will use that, those funds, and we will aggressively find other areas of planned expenditure in the next budget. Replace taxpayer dollars with ARPA funding. There are some restrictions in terms of how you do that, but I think we could be a lot more aggressive than we want it to be and still fall within the guidelines for ARPA. Take these infrastructure projects and bond them when the time comes. Right? And, you know, that's a source of more than $3 million in funding that we could use to offset the budget this year. So we can talk more in detail about that with the Board of Finance and probably need some additional guidance about how you could do this. But I think there's an arbitrage between sort of using ARPA funds for projects that we would normally bond or using or bonding those projects and doing more precisely when we're a lot more clear about how much that's going to cost and redirecting more of these ARPA funds to offsetting the next year's budget. So I think to answer your question more precisely, which is what if these projects run over, what we'll do is we, it's like any project, you'd have an appropriation to the overage. In terms of, got to quote, where the budget, where that money comes from, it's going to come from unbalanced.
Okay. The, because these are phenomenal projects. Couple of quick questions. Did you receive any requests from any other boards or in town, like Board of Ed? Were there any?
So the Board of Ed has its own ARPA grant. It's 900.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, it's 900, it's not a million dollars, it's 900 and something.
Yeah, I don't know the exact number, but it's around in the $900,000.
I have a summary of it.
Oh, that's great. No, that's great. Sure, that's great. Thank you.
So what they did was the Board of Education met separately, and they've decided how to spend their money. So the money.
Thank you, Dan.
So it's, and I. I ain't 40 years old anymore. $981,051. And so what they've done is they, the Board of Education has met and decided what they're going to do about their money. The funds I'm talking about was for the town, and so that's been decided by the Board of Selectmen.
So the Sewer Commission had put in a request to get some sewer projects, which, obviously, there is one in there. Parks and Rec had, you know, reached out, and obviously you see a lot of things in there, the Health Department.
Yeah, one general idea that we had that was projected was the idea of supplemental compensation for frontline emergency workers, that sort of thing. There was a real, it was attractive on the surface, but it was going to be very difficult to adjudicate just who really qualifies for that, whether they were 100% dedicated. Well, what if they only spent 80% of their time helping? Do they get something? And to try and do that in a fair way, we really, really felt that was going to be difficult to do. And I think we've adopted the approach that says instead, why don't we do these projects that benefit the entire town? Because in that way, the benefits accrue to all taxpayers. And so our sense was that that was a fair way to do this. And so we elected not to pursue that. The second thing we did not do was individual business relief. I think maybe the case could have been stronger for that in the kind of mid-2020 timeframe, when a lot of businesses were suffering. The reality is, a lot of them had bounced back. It's unfortunate that they had a rough period. But again, that was a decision that we elected not to make for similar reasons, which, I mean, how do you decide? And if you spread it, and if you spread it among them, a lot of businesses, it's just not that impactful, so.
Yeah, and they were also, like, when you had to look at all the varying provisions of the grant, some of the things related to COVID response, it couldn't be things that had been spent before March of 2021.
Right.
So it's not like you could go and reimburse somebody for expenses they incurred in the summer of 2020.
Interesting.
So our proposal is that we would vote to recommend these committee ideas to the Board of Finance for them to consider. And then what they could do is they can certainly make adjustments to this, and Dan and I will be available to talk to them about it. But the one, the one thing for sure would be they would take these ones that are out of the Board of Selectmen budget and cut the Board of Selectmen budget and make that a Board of Finance cut. And then, you know, Chairman Palin has expressed some concerns about our collective town and Board of Education budget this year, just given the amount of the delta versus last year because of the way we funded the budget for the last fiscal year. And so we could certainly have a discussion about whether some of this ARPA funding could be shifted out of these infrastructure projects. We relegate that to bonding and use that to offset some of the other spending in the budget. And we can, we can talk about that with the Board of Finance when they meet next.
Just a question in terms of process, and I commend the work in your public meetings related to that. Would there be a downside if, having had the proposal, now it's out, now we're starting to talk about it tonight, to, in essence, put this over for, to one additional meeting in case there are others now in the community who have learned and discovered this process who may want to have an opportunity to be heard? Or even if you took the, everything in the everything else category, because that seems to be the broadest area of discretion, and just, you know, leave that open for, you know, further comment? I'm not the type to undo committee work, but I'm just thinking as a town-wide, you know, matter, I mean, you know how folks are. We've seen it in other venues where all of a sudden, the event is here, and that's when everybody, you know, pays attention. And obviously, you know, you had your public meetings, but.
Yeah, it's a good point. What I would suggest in that regard, there's, Kate, what's the email address that people can send to if they got just a Board of Selectmen?
BoardofSelectmen@DarienCT.gov.
Yeah, so I think it's a great idea. One thing we had considered was the idea of whether we have a public hearing to discuss all of that. When I did Board of Finance public hearings for all those years, typically what happens is you get a lot of people to talk about the Board of Education. is you get a lot of people to talk about the Board of Education budget and in six years did I have three comments on the Board of Selectmen budget? So it's not to minimize that, but what I would say is if, you can find these committee ideas on the town website if anyone in the public would like to comment on those. Let's start with sending an email to BoardofSelectmen@darianct.gov. And if you've got a comment or a different suggestion, we'd love to hear from you. This is going to get considered by a lot of folks before it's finalized, so we would love to hear from you. If it looks like there is a significant number of comments on that, I will be happy to convene a public hearing.
Perfect. I mean, Sydney, I don't have any thoughts or changes, but it just struck me as maybe a.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, really, it's a ton of money. We have tried to invest in less visible but very valuable infrastructure projects. I think Dan and crew did a great job in prioritizing that, and I thank you for that. We've also tried to include some high visibility stuff, and we've tried frankly to avoid controversial stuff like, you know, grants to individual businesses or extra compensation for people and all of that. And so if you look at the list, I, you know, at the risk of a modesty, it's, I think it's a pretty good list. But we'd love to hear from the public if people have suggestions. Marcy?
Yeah, just zoning in on, you know, everything is very specific and you can see until you get to the human services area, the mental health support, the emergency assistance, the other nonprofit, that's the area that I think is really kind of important as we're talking about ARPA funds. And I'd love to hear from them in particular what exactly those services, I mean, it's, you know, a little bit over half a million dollars, which is great. I really want that department. Did they give you an idea on where they're?
I mean, I'll let Kate talk more specifically about that, but the general gist of that was we'd had a number of folks from David Now to Allie Ramstead who said, look, it's super important that we dedicate some funds for all this, particularly when you hear about how much kids have suffered in town as a result of a lot of the restrictions they've had to live with. And so there was a lot of enthusiasm for that. Kate, you can talk to maybe some of the specifics they have.
Right, so the thrust, you know, starting like with the mental health support, we are aware of an agency in town that provides mental health support who basically has a rather long waiting list for clients to come in and get support. Security was intended to go for agencies that will provide the food to people who are struggling. Emergency assistance was intended to be managed by the human resources, I'm just human services department for things like people who have fallen behind on their mortgage as a result of COVID or their electric bills, things like that. Our plan is to use the grant application that we use for agencies that are applying for the annual budget to get funding, to use that for agencies to apply for grants under this ARPA program. So we don't have specific agencies that we've determined would get this, but with the human services department, we would use that grant application to solicit the proposal for how they would use it.
Got it.
You know, one of the concerns we have with like the mental health support, to provide funding to an agency is that we can't be endowing a position that would go away. It would, you know, we have to be supporting them in some other way, but trying to make it possible for our residents who need this service to get it. Thank you.
Other questions?
Kate, can you speak to reporting a little bit?
On the ARPA?
Yeah.
So Jen would be able to speak to it better because she's the one of us to do it, but there are, with the federal grant, there are deadlines for when we have to report. Somebody did ask if we were going to need assistance, and right now Jen feels that she's capable of doing all the reporting that the federal government requires. We do have to commit the funds by, it's 2024 and it will need maybe December of 2024, and they have to be expended by December 2026. So there is a sunset date. And part of our goal with the timing is also to, you know, to get these things in front of the Board of Finance in time where they can save money in the fiscal '23 budget so that we can be fairly confident that we're on the road to RTM approval of these appropriations so that the Board of Finance could remove them. I mean, they can wait till the, it can wait till the RTM gets there to remove them, but that was our goal.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to get these ideas in front of you guys in this meeting so that we can meet that timeline.
Got it. Dan, do you have a comment?
Dan Baumgartner, 64, Hanson. In order for the Board of Finance to be comfortable excluding the capital projects that are in the proposed Board of Selectmen budget from our budget, we were hoping to have a definitive approval on this list before we take our final budget vote, which is in April. And the sequence would require the RTM Rules Committee to see that list no later than, I believe it's March 7th. So our timing here was tonight, Board of Selectmen, tomorrow night, Board of Finance, RTM Rules next week, or the following week, whatever it is, and then the full RTM. If we miss one of those deadlines, then it's unlikely that the Board of Finance will have definitive approval on the list before our budget vote. Now, that's a risk we can take. I might offer a different solution, which is if the Board of Selectmen is not comfortable on voting on the entire list tonight, perhaps the Board of Selectmen could vote on those items designated as Board of Selectmen approved. And with that formal approval, assuming we get Board of Finance approval tomorrow night, then we could then have that authorization in hand before our budget vote.
Yeah, I mean, my intention with this, again, it doesn't sound like you guys are going to make any changes to this, but we would actually vote all of these ideas out of this committee tonight so that when you get this tomorrow, all of this has been approved by the Board of Selectmen. Does that allay your fear?
That allays my fear. I was hearing discomfort on voting the entire list out tonight, but that's just an observation.
Well, I'm sorry, I have one point to that. So, so keep in mind that, it consists with a public comment a few minutes ago, that the first step in voting for this was the ARPA committee, and now the next step is the Board of Selectmen. And so, yes, we would be voting all of these ideas. But the good news is there's multiple committees subsequent to that who could make changes to this list, and so there's still plenty of opportunity for a public comment. I could reconvene the ARPA committee again if it looks like there's a lot of input. So, so I think, just making sure you've got Board of Selectmen approval so you guys could be comfortable moving forward. I mean, it's possible we collectively might want to make adjustments to this list, but I think.
As long as there's no less than those items, then I'm totally comfortable as a Board of Finance member.
Okay. Well, that would be what I would propose.
Yep.
Thanks, Dan.
I'm sorry, Sarah, you want to say something?
No, I just was wondering if, just following that thread, I didn't know if we were taking out the ones that we'd already approved. But I, so we're looking to approve all of this tonight so that, but being open to feedback and then, I guess, reconvening, if there was a.
Well, you're recommending it to the Board of Finance.
Right.
So there's actually nothing to say that a member of the public can't contact the Board of Finance and say, we want you to make these changes.
Right, okay.
They will then be recommending it to the RTM, who again has the opportunity to make the.
As long as there's a way for the public to provide it.
Absolutely, all by design.
Right, so it's not, so if there are members of the public who show up at the Board of Finance and who have issues or commentary or different ideas, then my concern would be if the Board of Finance was then reliant on, well, it's Board of Selectmen approved. Well, if I vote to approve this, it's with the idea that there's still an opportunity for folks to be he, her, and there'd be public comment, and that they're not.
Well, it's a good point, but there's no difference between this and a regular budget process, right? We're going to recommend our budget, the Board of Finance is going to take that budget, and they're going to make changes to that. And that's okay, that's their job. This is the, this process is no different than that. We're going to approve it. We'd love for them to vote the ideas that have come out of this committee, but it's their call in terms of what exactly to do. Our recommendation is all of these ideas. Our further recommendation is that the ones that are in our budget, that they cut those because they're going to be funded by ARPA money. And then further consideration is whether they want to flip between whether some of these infrastructure projects should be bonded and the ARPA funds directed elsewhere. They could do that as well. So again, similar to our budget process, and the RTM could further make changes, so.
Right, but we're the idea people at the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Finance is, how does this fit? How do we do things fiscally responsibly? I mean, obviously, you know, John, you know that better than anybody.
Yeah, or they could get, they could get new information, like public input and all that that would suggest a change in direction, and this whole timeline is set up to facilitate that.
But this has been discussed, right? There have been a number of meetings. This list is on the website. How many people are on the committee?
Oh, Lord. I should call it 12 people, something like that.
So it's been pretty well represented in town.
And we did try and put out there on social media that the list was out there, it was on the website.
Right, so have we had a lot of, I feel like it's been pretty bad.
We had one member of the public attend the first meeting.
Yeah.
And speak about drainage projects. Since then, we have not had any noncommittee members attend. But they've also been, the meetings have all been Zoom and aired on TV 79 as well.
So that kind of wraps that up. I'd recommend to all of you a vote in favor of the ideas as presented, recognizing that there's plenty of opportunity for further public comment and for input and changes by the Board of Finance and the RTM. Other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, so seeing no other questions, may I have a motion to, where am I here?
Want to approve the resolution?
Recommend this to.
Recommend this resolution to the Board of Finance. Marcy moves. John seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Thank you for all of that work. Thank you, Dan, for joining us, and thank everyone else that was on the committee that worked very hard on this.
Monica, good for Kate. Kate, do you need to be running the RTM meeting right now?
We are, no, Kate is good.
You are my priority. No, no, no. I know, I understand that. I shouldn't know if we had 100 people waiting. Am I understanding that it has, I've been getting messages.
That's what I'm wondering, like, do you have 100 people waiting for you to go start that meeting?
No, I started the meeting, I opened it up, and Cecil, who always helps.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt and to.
No, but it's also good practice for them because I'm not going to be here in March and I'm not going to be here in May.
Got it, okay, sorry. Thank you.
But we will move along because I know Kate will be joining them. So the next item on the agenda is to discuss creation of a community's value statement. And as Kate said, there were a couple of, there were a number of policy issues that were brought forth that I thought we should talk about, and I wanted to start with two tonight, including this one. I'll give you a little bit of my thoughts. I feel like, what's the first thing anyone living or working or visiting or even Googling Darian should know about us, right? A community value statement lets everybody know our core values. I see it as a way to define our future goals and to act as a guide when we are making decisions and providing a standard to which our actions can be assessed. It should think long-term, similar to what our plan of conservation and development does, but it should be short and memorable. So those are my thoughts, and I'd like to open it up to discussion.
I think that that's a good basis point for, you know, going forward and considering, you know, various forms of statement. I like the idea that goals are a part of it. I think that's integral to a value statement, and I think any process by which we have those conversations and have input from community leaders, other community leaders and citizens would be very worthwhile. I think it could be a very dynamic process and with a good work product at the end. So I'm, you know, happy to be involved in undertaking that kind of work.
Okay.
I'm curious how you envision seeing that this being written, like putting together the five of us to do this, or?
Yeah, this was, I was thinking about this being a board project. And I feel like that because we are elected representatives and our voices should reflect what the people that voted for us think. So I want us to do the work. I do think that, you know, I've looked into this, and I do think that short is actually, has turned out to be important. So I would say that we should all maybe start the discussion now and start maybe sending me your thoughts on what you want to see in it.
Have you seen other towns?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So I'll look those up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I would say it's an opportunity not just to write something down and have that circulated across town in a way that gets people not only excited about our values but forces them to sort of think about the choices that are embedded in those values, right? Because a value statement, it shouldn't be something that's obvious. It should be something that provides guidance and almost an anchor for you to make decisions or to, as someone said, assess actions and behaviors. And when we see a lot of things going on in town today, sometimes that we don't like, ideally you'd have a community value statement that you could retreat to and say, you know, I've been looking at our community value statement and in addition to telling people that these behaviors are not acceptable that we have sometimes seen, you can also make reference to the community value statement and say that this is the anchor of this town. This is how we think about how we treat others and how we value other members of our community. And when you have a community value statement, I think it's quite powerful to have something short and pithy that you can point to and say, this thing has happened. Before I get into the details of that, I'd like to start with an articulation, a reading of our community value statement. Let's stop for a minute and reflect on that, and now let's actually consider what's going on. Because if it's a, if it's something, as Monica said, that's short and pithy, I think short and pithy also means enduring, but it also means challenging, right? One of the things about having a long statement, like I'm making right now, one of the things about having a long statement is that it's easy to get lost in the weeds or to get on page 17 where you're trying to say, okay, well, this dot point on page 17 says, actually, nobody cares about that. What they want is something that's printable on a card that we can show in a meeting and say, these are our values. What these people did is not consistent with those values. What these people did is exemplary of our, is an exemplar of our values, and we can use values to really reinforce a lot of good in this town. So I'm looking forward to something that's short and pithy and enduring.
Any other thoughts?
I love the idea of doing this. I do feel, I agree that we are the elected representatives, but I do feel like there's a way that we could include feedback from the community. What do they, you know, if we ask our community, what are the things that you feel that should be included? I would love to hear some of that feedback.
And I think that's a great idea, and that's our job. Our job is to go out and ask people and bring it back here. Absolutely.
Yeah, when we have this on our agenda or we're considering graphs of those community values, I want to absolutely encourage members of the public to come to that meeting or send Kate an email suggestion, and this won't be done in five minutes and one.
No, 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 that's, that's exactly what I'm looking for. That's exactly what I'm looking for.
Perhaps our communications person might have some, like, useful ideas in terms of extending the reach of giving notice that these discussions are taking place and how they can be informed and how to, you know, participate. I will say, for my own purposes, I'm always very impressed with people who take the time to actually write something. To me, that shows like a real commitment. You're sitting down, you're putting pen to paper, your keystrokes, and it evidences a thought and concern that I always find impressive. I'm always happy to read commentary that comes in.
That's what I want us to generate, the five of us. I want us to generate those thoughts.
Yeah, and then the other thing is that to Monica's point about kind of keeping this short, it's going to be hard to do that. And I still like the Mark Twain line, which is where he opens up the letter and he says, well, if I'd had more time, I would have written a shorter letter. It is actually hard to come up with something that's short and pithy that serves the purpose we discussed before, which is to be an anchor for how we treat other people as opposed to a 20,000-page document that becomes bureaucratic and useless.
Like, former volunteer colleagues will tell you that I used to annoy them because I used to want to apply the Gettysburg.
He's still annoying us, actually, but.
The Gettysburg Address standard.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, say something so powerful, so short, and it's really. If you could, you know, say something so powerful, so short, then it's really memorable and lasting.
Couldn't agree more. Anyway, we look forward to that. Thank you.
Okay.
So some homework to do?
Some homework. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss the proposed streetlight policy, and I'm going to ask Kate to cover this.
Right, so this, it actually came up when we had some requests. We've had them, you know, a couple of requests over the recent years to install new streetlights in people's neighborhoods. And we need some guidelines to help make the decision. It is the Board of Selectmen's decision, but we wanted to put some guidelines in place for, to make it more of an objective, objective decision, not subjective. So basically, what we did, I found some policies that other towns had used and shared it with Ed Gentile, and he, he added some to it to reflect our history, you know, what the situation is now that we own the streetlights throughout town and what we felt the process should be. So that's what you see before you. And the purpose of tonight was just to hear your, hear your comments, things that you would like to see added, see deleted, questions you have.
So Mike went through. Did you get Mike's cover?
I did, and I, so I'm looking at the first of the history. You're right that it's not consistent, and I think, you know, what we were talking about is, we had the streetlights, the regular ones you think about, and then we had the model block, where we have the decorative lighting. And those ones had always been part, had always been owned by us, as opposed to the regular streetlights. And I think one of the other issues, mainly around the LED lights, we do now have LEDs. We made that switch a few years ago when we bought them. We actually did that.
So I guess, so my comment related to the point four and then the asterisk is that-
Doesn't need to be there?
Doesn't really need to be there because, I mean, if we should be looking at the safety of LED streetlights that we have, then we should be looking at as, as part of like the normal course of, of business. I don't know that it belongs in a policy statement because saying in one part, oh, the AMA says it may be a problem, but we have-
But we're doing it anyway.
So it just-
Yeah, you're right. It's, yeah, I get that. So.
To kill the comment in my office.
Kill the comment, yeah.
Absolutely.
I mean, but we certainly should be cognizant of what the AMA is saying, you know, saying, and if this is really a, an issue, maybe where it's an issue, it's because of the way that the streetlights are clustered together or, or other factors that might be, might not be applicable to us. But something to look at, but I don't know that it belongs in the policy statement. Another thing in, and some of this is, you know, just wordsmithing, and we have things to, you have things to do.
Right. I don't think, Mike, I don't think we need to go through, like, you know, Kate can clean up all those.
I can make those edits.
Right. I think more like concept kind of a discussion.
The only other substantive part was that, was at the, was at the end when it, you said that the report or the proposal comes back to us for approval or denial. I think it should be approval, denial, or amendment because it gives us the opportunity so it's not take it or leave it, because there might be other factors that might weigh in, whether it's related to cost or whatever else is going on, so we're not, you know, bound by a take it or leave it approach.
I had a couple of questions that I wanted to get feedback from the group on is, in number five, it has, "Darianne Police Department regularly reports broken lights to the Department of Public Works. The goal is to repair lights within two months of receipt of reported outage." So two questions. One is, reported to the police or reported to PW?
I'm going to assume reported to the police.
Right, so we should clarify that. And then, in general, do people feel that that is, so if it's the first complaint to the police, is two months a good time? Is, should that be shortened, or does that feel right for people?
You could change it to be, you know, as soon as possible, right? In which case, they'll do it as soon as they possibly can without kind of reference to a specific time period.
You know, I would like to ask Ed if there was a reason behind the two months, if that is the lead time that he needs.
Right. Or maybe, I like John's idea.
As soon as possible, and if it takes Ed three months to get light bulbs, I mean, what, it takes him three months to get a light?
Well, because we hire a streetlight maintenance contractor, so that's what I was trying to figure out, if, if that's the reason there's a, such a long time. Let's find out from-
Let's find out what the reason for the timing was.
Let's find out from that, okay. And then, on number seven, the first three items, we are looking at, "The Department of Public Works will consider the following: the nighttime business and/or pedestrian activity, the traffic volume, and the accident history." I think that it should, there should be something, a timeframe there. We're looking at, you know, how long are we going back?
On all three?
Yeah.
Oh, in terms of data for-
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's variable.
I'm just thinking, because we get people that ask us that, you know, that, that are requesting this, so, so to be as buttoned up as we can, I think it's, I think it's good. Kate, I should have asked you this earlier, but do we have an annual streetlight maintenance fund? And if so, do we have any funds in it?
It's not a fund. It's a, it's a budget line, and it's budget.
Okay, there is already that there. Okay.
We've had that since we bought the streetlights.
Okay. Those are all my, my comments. Anyone else? Sarah?
I just had a question. So do requests or concerns or complaints come into police, public works, and Board of Selectmen?
Yes.
Okay, so do we want to, we want to make sure that they're aggregated into one place?
Well, you know, the goal is to get them, you know, the request for these streetlights to be coming to the Board of Selectmen.
Right, okay.
Because they do now come into any and all of those departments.
Right. And then are they all sent through the Board of Selectmen over to Ed, or are they just all sent over to Ed?
Well, right now, it's, they have to end up here. There hasn't been any that, you know, staff has felt should be brought forward to the Board of Selectmen, but part of that is because we don't have any rules around what should come to you. What are the decisions that you should use in, in, you know, making, what are the guidelines that you should make in, use in making the decision?
So that's why we're doing this.
Yeah.
Okay, so what we'll do is, we'll take in, Mike, all of your edits were terrific. We'll take in those all into consideration. We'll check back with Ed, and then we'll send you a draft. And if you have any other questions, share them, and then we will look to vote on this at the next meeting.
I would say so, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
For the discussion in action at the next meeting.
So are there any other questions on the street policy? No? Okay. Next item on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes of February 7, 2022, the special meeting. Are there any edits, deletions, corrections?
No.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve? Mike moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. And on agenda review, do we have any items that board members would like to see on future agendas?
I just want to include the IT committee. We just had a formation meeting, but the next meeting, I'd like to talk a little bit about that so that we, just to let everybody know the scope of that work.
Okay.
Do you want that as a separate agenda item or do you do that under the Selectment update area?
Separate agenda item.
So have you had any, you've had one meeting, right?
We had one meeting, but, or the basic, a lot of smart people on that committee, so it's, it's great that they pulled together.
And your chair, so that's terrific.
I know. So they're all a lot smarter than I am, so, anyway, they're making me nervous. No, the, the first part of it is just kind of level-setting everybody in terms of the scope of IT we're talking about, how it actually works, what Jeff does, and he actually has some materials that he's working on pulling together just to inform the, the rest of the committee. A lot of them just don't have any experience with sort of town government IT, and so for them to get their minds around kind of what we might do, that really needs to start with a basic and common set of facts. And so Jeff is going to pull that together, send it around to the committee before we have our next meeting. Right now, we're set to meet monthly, and so we're going to take our time to make sure we have a common understanding of what's out there, and then start to rely on some of the experts on our committee to come up with some suggestions and an iterative process between sort of those outside experts and the town staff that leads all of this. The one important thing to point out is this really is for town IT as opposed to Board of Ed IT. And so even though Jeff oversees IT globally for both the board town and the Board of Ed, this really is about from a town standpoint, what could we do? It may come out of the IT effort that there are some suggestions to the Board of Ed about changes they could make, or whether we should somehow work together more, more closely on the issue of IT just because the opportunity's so big. So, anyway, we're going to play this forward. There's not a ton of urgency on this right now, but I'd like to get it right, recognizing that we've tried to tackle this before, and I think this is the first time we've had a formal committee to look at it. So I'm excited that maybe we could make some changes that would make a, I think, a, our, our systems even better. Final comment, as I stressed to the group, this is not about fixing problems or some disaster. This is, how do we go from a great system that Jeff does a real fine job managing to something that's best in the state, right? So this, this really is about great to fantastic as opposed to, you know, fixing a problem and getting it adequate. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
And I will pay back on that by saying thank you to all of the people that volunteer for that committee.
Oh, they're fantastic. They're great.
Thank you for the people that volunteer for the Hinley Homes Royal Committee. Thank you for the ARPA Committee volunteers. Thank you for everybody in town that steps forward and, and helps out all of us. Okay, if there is nothing else, may I have a motion to adjourn? Mike moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Thank you, everyone. Great meeting.